Thank you all for joining tonight. I always want to say good afternoon. All right, so we'll go ahead and jump in. We do have a forum and we do have one member to enter in again. And we'll go ahead. Is there any, do we need to add any other business? All right, so entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda. Been moved by Kathy and seconded by Rebecca. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, question carries. We'll move on to department reports. So we'll start with police.
I have December twenty twenty four report as follows. One accident, two agency assists, two alarms, four animal calls, one assault or attempted contacts, one harassment, twenty-one information reports, one juvenile problem, one property lost, found, damaged, recovered, one suspicious circumstance, one criminal traffic, two traffic infractions, two violations of protection restraining order, one warrant arrest, and six nine-one-one hangups, totaling fifty-three for the month of December. When we started in September, you guys were at two hundred eighty-five calls. We ended with four hundred forty-sevens. We handled a hundred and sixty tuition for less than three months, so.
They have the contracts for the day. Yeah.
Any questions, concerns?
Were you able to get that ordinance that you needed to firm arrest?
I got it. Yeah, I'll bring it to you this week.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks, Chief.
Yep.
Thank you very much. All right, we will move on to City Hall.
All right, so we got the PD cars all taken care of. Those are ready to be picked up Wednesday. I already worked with Valentine on that. And the new school zone signs have arrived and it seems like they were put in. I think I just got an email with that. So we have three news and speeding signs and school zone signs. I believe they can actually write tickets for those now. And I think before they couldn't because the lights weren't flashing. Um, the audit was complete. And I do still have some questions on it. I'll have another report on that. I tried to close out twenty-four and it seems like the numbers that they gave us that we were over in cash is what we're under now. So I still think it has to do with the LGIP account because it's like down to the dollar. And it's, we put our transfers in a little bit weird, not weird, but they were, they were a challenge to put in. And it seems like even after bringing that up several times, we were, and you were there for one of the meetings. They were, we were told that wasn't it? I spent a couple of days and it does seem like that was it, so. I'm not sure what will happen there, but I did request for them to reevaluate twenty-three. And we have started our closing preparations for twenty-four, so we're putting all of our boxes together, opening up the twenty twenty-five file folders and all that for the next year. All of our tiered billing systems haven't been implemented. I know Carly and I spent several hours updating everyone's account. Carly was in this weekend just going through every single bill, one at a time, just to make sure that everything looked correct. And billing for December was slightly delayed due to that. I believe Sherry put out a Facebook post on it. Out of the three hundred and sixty houses that we have here, we only had a hundred and forty-nine of those tiered forms returned, so I'm assuming we're gonna get some, some phone calls. And dog license renewals went out with bills. Carly did that. And Public Works is now set up with I-Works, which will be nice. I think they start meeting with them this week. And we were able to take care of the Durham contract, which was the girl that was in here a couple of weeks ago, so her water's been turned on. And then we've got all the admin side of it taken care of. And and then I've got some stuff on the agenda tonight for a finance and a grant committee, which is gonna be really helpful for City Hall. And, and I will have detailed figures for the LGIP and transfers as soon as I can get the audit questions answered, and then we can all look and see what we want to put in the LGIP account. And that's really it. We've been pretty busy, so. That's it for us. Anybody have any questions?
I was gonna say, it looks like we have money to put in, so thank you for answering that.
Yeah, if that, well, they're saying that we're over that hundred, so if that's not the case, it will adjust our numbers, but we should, we're still over, yeah.
Did have a question about the bills. There was right towards the end of, oh, the division bills. Is that all the detail we got on our invoices? Just you owe us this much?
I can answer the, yeah, I made sure to know what was what. And, and so I can answer any questions on, there's an IT and then there's a software one, and then there's the cloud.
Okay. So is that our expected annual now? It came in like ten grand, right?
Um, I think it's more like twelve, and then there was another one. I've been working with their IT to get our, our shared drive on the cloud as well. They have to manage our three sixty. I did get a quote for that. I was gonna kind of chat with a couple of people, and there is an annual expense to it, but we don't have the fear like we had last year, and we don't have to buy new server computers because literally everything will be on the cloud, and I can be on vacation and still be able to, you know, do anything. And then they come in and set up a OneDrive for us, which would allow us to each have personal files, so like I've got anything, you know, police department related. It's not accessed by anybody. It's not on my desktop or anything like that. You can lock it down. And so I will bring that to the next meeting. I just didn't wanna bring it to this one.
Okay, cool.
So, yeah. Any further questions?
And thank you for the twenty twenty-five budget book.
Yes.
That's phenomenal.
All right, so we all go into public works.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Jay Crowe, I'm the Public Works Assistant. This week, we actually didn't provide you guys with the written public works report because we don't have a lot to report. Past couple of weeks between holidays and lots, end of the year time off and stuff, a lot of the days it's just been either me or John, not us both, so we haven't got too many projects going, just a lot of daily stuff. We're working on this I-Works thing. We both have our login. We're kind of just testing the waters, though our first meeting with them is this Wednesday. So that will get the ball rolling as far as learning the full capabilities by works and how we can get it implemented. Um, we had a pretty big storm week, week or two ago, so that came along with some storm cleanup and just really been the regular things these past couple of weeks, so. I know John had some last minute reports, not last minute, but end of the year reports for both ecology and Department of Health. Don't quote me on this, but I do believe he got his lab accreditation paperwork in for this year, so we can maintain our lab status and, yeah, just a lot of paperwork, a lot of getting started on this inventory. We've still been down in the shop cleaning things around so we can get it all properly inventoried. Ready to hit the new year rolling? Any questions, anyone?
Are you staying for the meeting?
Yeah.
Hey, it's like the questions, whatever.
Okay, perfect. I'll answer them.
Oh, thank you.
We have trees down.
Um, none urgent. I know there's one in the watershed that needs cleaned up. It's on our road access road in there, but other than that, I don't believe so.
I think we did in the park.
Oh, yeah, in the park.
The park, definitely.
Park, there was one across the horse shoe pits.
Yeah.
You know, I liked the, I like to see the chief there giving this report from them. It makes me think that we could move that. I might do it during the three minutes.
All right, so we'll move on to council reports. I don't have a lot to report. I did sit on the mayor's meeting. They are looking to potentially restructure the way that they're doing those. They were asking for input, which was great. There was, I think, only two of us in attendance out of the nine, and so they're trying to find a way to to make it, and I threw out some ideas, and I think commissioners are gonna take that and kind of run with some of it, so. And other than that, you know, I'll attend as many meetings as I can. I did start back to full-time work today, so we'll see how that goes going forward. Other than that, any questions for me?
That mayor meeting was super valuable for the city. When I, when I was going to them, it was, it's, it's our opportunity to talk to the county commissioners, you know, and get some face time and
Definitely.
Get input.
Yeah. All right, so we will move on. Let's move on there if you have any.
Set in on the audit. I think that's about it.
Yeah. That's quiet with the holidays, that's fine.
Hey, I attended the school board meeting for December. It was an eye opener. And I conversed with Rachel and with Steve Birch to make sure I have all my ducks in a row and my facts correct. I prepared a statement and I gave it to him about reaching out for our impact fees. And after I gave my statement, it appeared that they were not even aware of this. The board was not aware of this. And so then the school or school district secretary pretty much gaslighted me. And she said that she gave the impression that, that the business director and the, who's the head of the school district?
Brennan.
Yeah, whatever his title is. That they had been working with us all along. And and when I tried to push back because I was not on the agenda, we were not allowed to have back and forth. And I didn't think at the time to say, well, why don't you put me on the agenda so we can have a conversation? But basically, she tried to to negate everything that I'd said, like they were working very cooperatively and, and they have not been. And so then before we finished up, one of the guys said, well, let us know, you know, going forward what's going on or what you need from us. And I said, well, at this point, it's in your ball. It's in your board. And I said, so you need to figure out what you're gonna do, because they said they didn't have the fifty thousand to complete their report.
Their comp plan.
Their comp plan so that they could get three million in impact fees. So I said, well, as a school district, aren't you required to have a comp plan? And of course, that's when I got shut down because I'm not on the agenda. So that was my little experience there. Oh, and they, they, December was a bunch of financial information, so anybody who has children in school, you probably want to get on that school board. They have three elections coming up this year. And their financial was, it has been declining over the years. I sat down and read through a bunch of it and kind of saw a pattern there. And they didn't even discuss the financial. They didn't even bring it up in the meeting. It was, it was hidden. It wasn't like we do printouts and show all this stuff. It was a link that if you were interested, you could click on it and look through it, but they did not even discuss it during the meeting. They just kind of moved right along, moved through their agenda and and didn't address it. So I would recommend if you're an interested party that you get on that school board because there's three elec, three up for election this year.
And if you don't have the link, good, good luck finding the budget.
Yeah, it's, it's actually on their website.
It's on their website?
Yeah.
Where the link is?
The, yeah, the, the December meeting is on their website. And then if you read through their agenda, their agenda is so generic, it's just scary. But if you read through it, there's little links that have the different things that they're addressing for that agenda. It's, it's not a real transparent agenda. So you really have to do your work in order to understand that. So that was my experience with that. And I would be remiss in not bringing up the passing of Jimmy Carter, who turned one hundred years in December. Or was it December? It was sooner than that, but he passed away in December. And he was a pretty impressive guy. He served in the Navy as a submariner. He ran a peanut farm and a seed and farm supply. He served on county boards, the hospital, and the library. He served in the Georgia State Senate. He was Georgia governor. He was president of the United States. He ex-executed the Panama Canal treaties and the Camp David Accords between Egypt and Israel. He negotiated the Salt Treaty with Soviet Union for nuclear limitation. He did diplomatic relations with People's Republic of China. He got the Department of Education, Department of Energy passed. He wrote thirty-two books. He established the Carter Center, which does humanitarian work around the world. And one of their things is to eradicate the Guinea worm disease, which would only be the second thing that has been eradicated in our lifetime. He is worldwide for conflict mediation. That he established the Jimmy and Roslin Carter Center, and for one week a year, they volunteered for Habitat for Humanity up until the year twenty twenty. He's a recipient of the Nobel Priest Prize, Presidential Medal of Freedom. And he championed conservation, human rights, ecology, and peace.
I think you probably have that. I thought it was pretty impressive. I got very reading. All right, we will move on. Anything to report?
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report. All right. With that, we will move on to committee reports. I know we don't have anyone from Planning Commission. I mean, don't see anybody from Park Board here tonight either. I didn't know. Tim, did you want to say anything about the park? I know that we've got the, the tree down. That means we've got that.
We're pretty close to the park.
I know that the ones right by the horse shoe pits were a mess.
I started picking up and setting right, putting them in their piles.
Okay.
It's gonna be a process.
Yeah, definitely.
So. I have all paperwork submitted for recorders and stuff like that, but it's just.
Excellent.
You have any trees there?
No, oh, gosh, I got anything from cedars to a couple of, one for.
Brian might want those too.
Probably came down, uh, vexed the reflectors.
Right next. Yeah.
Everything's happened the way the, the wind came through was kind of fine because it all came from the east, north, or southeast, and, and the sweat through and all to the other side. So it affected the new, uh, one new campsite, tent site that we put in. And then we got a leaner, which I don't think is gonna go anywhere now because it's west between two trees, but it's on the neighbor's property.
I saw that one too when I drove through. Yeah, I, I was gonna send, have somebody send a letter over to them as well, letting them know, hey, if you could please take that down, that would be great, because I saw that when I drove through right after the storm. I saw that one, and I'm like, that's, if that came the wrong way and there is anybody in there camping, I just don't want to, that's not a risk we want to run. So.
So other than that, it's, it's gonna be a process.
Thank you. All right.
What happens to the wood?
I know with some of it I recommended, we, we put it in the, the wood shed that we have down there for the, the tent sites and the camp sites to use and to be used in the kitchen itself. So we can get that filled up. That would be ideal. Then here, we'll move in. No public hearing tonight, no special presentation. Is there any public comment on our agenda items? All right, then we will jump right on into new business, so we'll start with Tony, if I can help you come up here and join me. Turn you in again.
Can I have you raise your, remember, repeat after me? I, Tony Shepherd, who solemnly swear or affirm.
I, Tony Shepherd, who solemnly swear or affirm.
That I am a citizen of the United States, the state of Washington and the city of Toledo.
That I am a citizen of the United States, the state of Washington, and the city of Toledo.
And I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States, the Constitution and laws of Washington, or the state of Washington, and the ordinances of the city of Toledo.
And I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States, the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington, and the ordinances of the city of Toledo.
And I will, to the best of my judgment, skill and ability.
And will, to the best of my judgment, skill and ability.
Truly, faithfully, diligently, and impartially perform the duties of the position of the city councilperson one.
And ability. Oh, I said that. Truly, faithfully, diligently, and impartially perform the duties of the position of city council position number one.
For the city of Toledo, county Washington, and such duties are prescribed by law, so help me God.
For the city of Toledo, Lewis County, Washington, as such duties are prescribed by law, so help me God.
Tony, if you could have me say those.
Until you're good through the year now.
No pressure, but don't.
And now. And now you can have your seat back. All right, so that being done, we will go ahead and move down the list. The next, this is just a brief on what, what we'll be covering. So for the council members, I want to acknowledge that the contracting question with resolution three zero seven A was signed without prior council approval. I know we have discussed this. This was an oversight on my part. I take full responsibility for not following the correct procedures on that and getting all of the contracts before you guys. And my intent was to ensure the timely action for the grant opportunity that, that the service was covered. And but I did recognize that this bypassed the importance of the role for you guys to be able to, you know, say, hey, this contract's not gonna work for us. Reviewing and approving such agreements, so since that time, services under the contract have been rendered, and the city has received the reimbursement for those services. This has created a financial obligation for us to pay the service provider. I understand and totally respect the council decision not to approve the contract itself, but what I am asking for is for the council to consider an alternative resolution. There is, the resolution will propose that we decouple the approval of the payment from the approval of the contract, so it will authorize Rachel to issue payment for the services that were performed, so we can meet our financial obligations without implying endorsement of the actual contract.
Which we already have received payment for this as well.
So with that being said, we'll go to resolution three zero seven A, which is a resolution authorizing payment for services rendered under an unapproved contract.
I will make a, I make a motion that we accept resolution three zero seven A.
I see.
Okay, so it has been moved by Eric and seconded by Rebecca. Is there a discussion to go along with this?
Yeah, well, it's my impression that Eric thought it was a piece of crap. Right?
It is.
Yes. And, and so that's, that's why it just got rejected. Is there any way that we can send a letter with this and say it's a piece of crap?
So that we're, we're, we're paying Cascade Renewables, and it's the Department of Commerce. I, I think we could, but we went into it knowing what they were gonna charge. We went into it knowing what they were gonna do, so it's our misstep to have not said this is a piece of crap beforehand. And I, so I think the grant committee and having some more people with their feet on the ground involved is gonna prevent this kind of stuff from happening, and also I won't be paying their two thousand dollar late fee either. I already told them that, so.
Okay, because the other thing I was gonna say is because you're in all the financial stuff and Sherry is not necessarily, are you not a stopgap to?
Yes, and during the time I was working on other stuff, and I, again, it was not something that I was really involved in because I was, I forget what I was working on at the time, but it wasn't, yeah, it wasn't something that I was involved in.
And this is one of these things too, and I think having the, the grant committee will help that it's not that somebody going, hey, this needs to be done right now, absolutely right now. I'm like, that's, and most places who are dealing with these grants are probably municipalities, and anybody who knows that knows how it works, and you can't just be like, this right now. That's not, that it's just not feasible.
So unless I'm learning, you're not ever gonna do that.
Exactly, yeah, it was definitely.
If they say right now, it's, yeah, sorry, but you're gonna have to wait.
Exactly, yep.
So there is another step to this grant that they're wanting us, you know, that we've been approved for. We won't be pursuing any more of it. We just have to pay them for the work done. Minus their late fees and so that's what you guys are approving is just me to make payment, which I've already received the deposit from Department of Commerce for seventy thousand dollars.
Did we already get a tangible product from them?
It was a report. So, yes.
So it's something that we could use in the future, possibly.
I don't know that.
I don't know that we would, and things change, but I mean, it's, it's our product. We have the finished products.
So essentially, yes, we could if we chose to, but.
Okay, if I recall, it seemed it was enough money to invent solar.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, if we have no further discussion, we'll go ahead and call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Question carries. All right, so we will move on to the next one, which is the Lewis County nine one one ILA. Entertain a motion?
I'll move that we accept the ILA since County nine one one.
I'll get a second.
Second.
Been moved by Rebecca and seconded by Kathy, so we'll go ahead and open it up for discussion.
Okay, I will reiterate my concern that we do not have representation. I would recommend that we go to a meeting if we can find one out, because I read through this whole thing. And they have to have no less than one meeting per quarter with no designation as to when it is.
They send us emails.
Okay, and then the what is it, the governing board or the?
Executive Board.
No, that, that's the executive board has to have at least one meeting per quarter, but then there's another organizational board or something like that.
Yeah, they have several meetings. They had several meetings to finish the ILA. Their last meeting that I was gonna go to was on a Saturday, so I couldn't make it, but they do have meetings, and I can pass those along if you're interested in attending them.
Yeah, because I think we should all start speaking out about, hey, you've got Centralia and Chehalis, but what about all these other little towns that are?
Well, they did take that into account. I mean, we, we went down, I think eighty-five percent is, our fee was reduced, so we went from over twenty grand a year to.
That's the fee, but we don't have a voice, is what I'm saying.
We do, we just have to show up. They, I mean, and they, they're in contact with me, asking if I have any questions. And this contract did come out, I would say, three months ago to council, and I let everyone know that they were having meetings on this and that we weren't voting on this, but I needed feedback from you guys so that way I could take it back to them, because I am in contact with the lady that has been working on this contract. I believe it was October that it came out.
Yeah, and, and that was my initial feedback is, we don't have a voice.
Yeah, we do, though. We, we can go, and I was just looking for feedback on the contract, which they were asking us. Do you see anything that you want to change? Questions, comments, concerns, anything like that? I didn't get anything from council, and I believe I even said, send me your emails, do something, but this is gonna roll out in January.
Okay. Maybe I need to reword that. We don't have a vote.
We, right, we don't have a vote, but you guys are, you know, I can start sending those meetings to council, and you guys are more than welcome to attend. I try to attend these when I can, but there's so many meetings going on at the end of the year. I just I couldn't go.
And even if we don't have a vote necessarily, at least having a voice there.
Yeah, and I mean, this was a, this, this feed, this was on the, the. Yeah, and I mean, this was a, this, this feed, this was on the voting ballot, I believe. There was a tax break that was voted on by Lewis County, which got our fees down where they are, so there technically is a vote on this. On the fees, because if we didn't vote it in as a county, our fees would have still been outrageous. I don't remember exactly what number it was.
I know, I looked it up the other day, was reading through it again.
I'll start sending you the emails when they come in.
Do we have any, any more discussion? Anybody have any other input? All right, we'll go ahead and call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so we'll go ahead and move down to the next one. So we've got the Winlock Public Works ILA. And we do have Jay here that can answer questions and speak on that also. Entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the Winlock ILA for wastewater treatment operations and testing services.
This is a discussion, I'll second.
Okay. All right, so it's been moved by Rebecca, seconded by Jamie, and we'll open it up for discussion.
So my first question is, is this basically to cover when these two guys are on vacation and or sick at the same time?
Not necessarily entirely, because currently our wastewater treatment plant is at a level two classification. Of the certifications we've been talking about that I'm going to begin is, begins with my operator and training license, which is not enough for me to technically be allowed to operate the treatment plant by myself in John's absence. And of course, I think I mentioned this a couple weeks ago, we can't necessarily expect John to, you know, not be nearby the treatment plant all the time. So doing this will allow us for, I would imagine it would only be in, you know, medical emergent situations or in times when John's taking vacation, but we need to have a classification of the treatment plant or one below available for services at the treatment plant. I can't make any process changes, so if I need to pretty much flip any switch down there.
You can have John on the phone telling me what to do. John can indicate for you to do something. So, I mean.
That's true, I mean.
That is technically true.
But, well, actually, actually, that's not true until I'm classification below, which I am not yet. And in the meantime, this will provide us with emergent services that will just be available.
So it will, oh, so it basically is our sales say, and tell me where you need to be.
So John hasn't been able to go on vacation at all, like leave anywhere far for many years, because we do have to have somebody with those certifications. This probably is never going to get used, honestly. But it would be nice to have, John has a bunch of vacation he needs to take this month in order to not lose it. He's got to be able to take that vacation. He should be able to go away and not have to be here in case of an emergency. Again, this is just in case of an emergency.
Yeah, it's like the one that we have with the county as well.
And last time it was brought up with in conversation, it was, Rachel did mention something with the county, and I don't know exactly what the ILA states with the county, I haven't seen it, but I would imagine their roster of wastewater treatment plant operators is slim, because the county doesn't have any wastewater treatment plants. And I do believe they offer those services. I think they have maybe one on hand. I'm not sure, but I do know they don't have any wastewater treatment plants, because that's usually a city.
Yeah, it's very similar to the public works one where they come in and do public works, you know, work. Again, if John were to be gone and we needed, you know, an emergency situation, that's when Winlock would be able to step in with this ILA. Is it going to get used?
Hopefully not.
Hopefully not. Better to have it and not, you know, not need it than need it and not have it.
It's also just a framework. If anything happens to John, you know, medically or with his employment, whatever happens, it gives us a time period where we are not out of compliance with ecology, and we can find ourselves another either contract operator or in part-time, full-time employee, whatever the case calls for.
Until J is certified.
Right.
My, the only problem I have with this is the first time we're seeing it, and usually what I would kind of expect, it sounds like we didn't pay the lawyers to do the work and make this, so, so that argument's going to go away, but usually, you know, we talk about it and we say, is this something that we want to do, and I think we would always.
Well, we brought, Jay actually brought it up at one of his meetings, I think one of his first reports, it was brought up. So we can definitely.
Public comment or something, I think I stood up.
Yeah, so we can definitely put it back on another agenda item if you guys want to revisit, like, next week. And Buzzard did review this for Winlock, I understand that, but yeah, if you guys want more time to review the contract, we can, we can bring it back if needed.
And, and then I also was a little surprised that we didn't go for a bidirectional, because, you know, we can help each other out.
I think they've got two guys there that are are certified, if I.
Yeah. Okay.
So.
So they didn't need it.
Just kind of.
Yeah, and that was originally what I spoke to Brandon about was, that was your public comment, was trying to trade services like that.
Yeah.
But they've got it locked down over there, I think, for water and certain people.
So their service fees is equitable.
Cheap.
Yeah, Winlock by no.
Typical Winlock, Winlock doesn't try to make money off this.
No, they do not.
It's like they're just outright pushing, yeah, pushing their costs over.
Yeah, my biggest concern was that we're using their beliefs and now we're using their.
They're not, they're not going to take, they're, they're being good neighbors.
Called Winlock?
No. They're, they're being good neighbors, which you could see more of in this county.
Just.
Yeah. Yeah.
They know they're ahead, they know they're ahead of us in development, you know, they made it to the freeway, they're getting tons of money because of that.
And they're not stepping on us to get there. They're holding out of hand.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, they've been nothing but gracious and helpful in every aspect. It's been phenomenal. Any further questions, comments? All right, we'll go ahead and call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
Erica, point of. Point of, or can we get the audience to stop yelling about what we're doing?
Yes, yeah, we do need to keep it down until we get to the public comment section.
Can I borrow your gavel? I'll use it.
You take, you got that.
I have to sign.
All right, so we'll move down to the next one, which is going to be resolution three oh eight A, a resolution of the city council of Toledo, Washington, establishing a finance committee to assist with the oversight and management of the city's financial affairs. Entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept resolution three oh eight A.
One second.
It's been moved by Rebecca and seconded by Tony. We'll open it up for discussion. I know I did have leave it was, was it not on this one? Okay, I take that back, I'm on the other one. One of these, I thought I had seen, said that it had to have two council members, and I was a little concerned about that.
I, I think this one should, should say two council members.
And I thought. Yeah, and I thought it had.
And I think it should be open if the rest of council wants to go, so that we make it, and we'll make it an open meeting.
Yeah, it will be open.
Yeah, because we're on, we're on slippery ground here with, you know, inviting other people in to come do things that we're technically pretty sure we're responsible for.
So it is, it is an open meeting. It will be held just like planning commission or anything like that. We, you know, if someone from, you know, residents wants to be on it, I just think, I know Jay wants to get more involved. I know Jamie's expressed, and Tony also. And it would be great to have just one meeting a month where we can sit down and look at, hey, you know, let's start transferring some money into the LGIP. This is where we sit. I mean, we can do that at council also, but it would be nice to have just a little bit more focus, a whole meeting focused on where our finances are, where they're going long-term, because it's kind of only during budget that we talk about it, and just having that, those extra eyes is always a good thing. And so I would like to set it up like a park board, you know, and I would be there. Obviously, everyone on council would be welcome. We would need a quorum. There would be minutes, it would, you know, be held very similar.
We do have a name issue, because technically we are all on the finance committee so that we can sign this.
Okay.
So whether it be the finance advisory board or whatever.
Okay, and I do believe we are supposed to actually have one. I can go back and look at, I guess Michelle had one, right? So the finance advisory.
Or something.
Finance advisory committee.
I mean, and if you guys would just rather me, you know, we could do workshop it and do it that way, I just. I think there needs to be more focus on long-term Toledo and bigger ticket items and yeah.
The county focuses the budget advisory committee.
Budget advisory.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'll amend my motion to accept resolution three oh eight A to have it renamed to budget advisory.
I'll second that.
All right, so the amended motion was made by Rebecca and seconded by Tony. Do we have any further discussion on it before I call for a vote?
Is this, is this something, sorry, Kim, is this something that we could handle monthly meeting as a workshop versus to have this?
I think, I think it should be an official meeting with minutes, because it is going to be talking about, you know, the future of Toledo and finances, rather than just a workshop. And the way I do need it set up for my own personal life, though, is it would need to be on one of the Mondays that I'm already here, because I come in Monday morning, I don't go home, I stay here. And so it'd be great if we could have it the Monday during a council meeting at four o'clock. That gives us, you know, four, four thirty, that gives us an hour and a half, two hours before council starts. I know, you know, you guys give up your time too to be here. I'm here quite a bit, so just having it on a, on a Monday that I'm already here is going to be, be helpful. And it can be an hour long. It doesn't need to be anything big.
And I do think that this also will give us, you know, even more transparency with the citizens. And that's, I know something we're really working on is to be as transparent as possible.
And it will help during budget, to where we can sit down and say, these are the things, and it's not like, you know, we sit down for budget and people are like, uh.
Yeah, breaks it up a little bit, like me.
I, yes.
I agree with Eric. There should be at least two.
Yeah, I plan on you and Tony, at minimum.
It would be nice if it could be written such that, I mean, if anybody on council wants to come up and sit and be part of it as an active member, then that's their role already, right? So it's basically, we're inviting, we're inviting other people to give input, which is great.
And it does say at least one member, so.
But that's a membership, you know, so that's a five, and it's pointed, so I just wanted to.
Yeah.
Maybe there's a five dot.
Yeah, it's five people, at least minimum one council member. So if we have all council members and, you know, Jay or, that's fine too. And we can even, you know, put it towards, there's no maximum amount of I don't care.
If you could, yeah. You could chat that for you.
It consists of a minimum of five members.
Yeah.
And that way you can look at more if you want.
So minimum of five members.
At least two.
At least two council members.
Yeah.
All right, cool, and then we, we don't necessarily need citizens, I don't think, but we can have, I think just putting unlimited members, if we put unlimited, yeah.
Anybody have anything else before we call for a vote? All right.
So we need to remember.
You need to say the committee shall insist of a minimum of five members.
And at least two.
And at least two city council members.
Tony, do you want a second amendment?
Second.
All right, so the second amendment is made by Rebecca and seconded by Tony, so we will go ahead and call for a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. All right, so moving on, we're moving on to resolution three zero nine A, a resolution of the city council of Toledo, Washington, establishing a grant committee to assist with identifying, applying for, and administering grant funding opportunities. Entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept resolution three oh nine A.
One second.
And moved by Eric and seconded by Jamie. We'll go ahead and open it up for discussion.
This is a good idea.
It is a very good idea. I cannot tell you.
We need more than four members.
Minimum of four members.
So change it to a minimum of four.
Yep.
I'm making a motion to a minimum of four.
And second.
You seconded.
You seconded.
Anybody can second.
I'll second.
All right, so the amended, the amended motion was made by Eric and seconded by Jamie. Do we have any further discussion on this one? All right, I'll go ahead and call for a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. So we will move on to the next one, which is the youth baseball contract discussion. I didn't open that up. Everybody have a chance to look at it?
And my question is, why aren't they paying any cap, of the cap, capex? Do they have a different rate going?
This is their contract. We were here for that.
Seems they could just fit in with the
The school.
With, or with, yeah, regular hookup, understanding that they only bill for.
And that was my suggestion, is that, you know, the months that they're, you know, using it, they just get billed a regular.
Normal, yeah.
And if it's tier four, it's tier four. Their contract's up twenty-six, twenty-five? Twenty-five, so it's up at the end of the year, so we just obviously wanted, you know, I know Jamie had requested the contract, so.
It doesn't look like their consumption's very.
No, it's not. I was looking at that too.
It was high in August, but.
But even then, it wasn't like astronomical at all.
So it doesn't feel like they, they're just letting the water.
No, I think the only, wasn't the only time they have it was a break?
I don't think it's for watering, not with these numbers.
I think it's just for the concessions.
No, it's not for, it's for the football field. So they were watering in twenty-three. Their consumption was really high, I think, and then they had a leak, but yeah, it's literally just for the football field for concession.
No, concessions has its own.
No, this is baseball.
This is the little league field.
The football fields are the different.
Okay, but the concessions has its own meter.
Yes, this is the one.
Yeah.
That we're talking about, I think.
Concessions, no. I don't think so.
The youth football field, or the youth baseball?
Okay.
Is the concession.
Oh, I had to click that. Yeah.
I don't know if that's like the title of it in your system, but it's the the youth baseball.
Yeah, the grade school.
Yes, yeah, the grade school has one concession, and I believe it has a bathroom that has a whatever, they have a sewer connection.
This could be greatly simplified if they're just on with the regular.
Just get billed for the cycle.
But the resolution might be more around, around that they can have an exception, although it may only be part year.
Okay. Yeah, and it's up in March, so I thought it was the end of the year, but Carly just let me know it's up in March, so.
We have time to, to play with it.
To get it.
Well, I mean, at this, yeah, we can just throw another resolution together and put it on the next. And I can get with this whole district and let them know.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and table it up for now and revisit it closer to March when it's due. And then last on the new order, our new business is the El Tano liquor license renewal.
Make a motion that we renew the alcohol on, you know, which license.
Then moved by Eric and seconded by Tony. Do we have any discussion on that?
They haven't had any issues there.
As I said, yeah, I asked if we had issues, but Chief's not here.
No, I had already asked him. No issues, no calls.
Are these preferential votes that are happening to me?
No.
I don't think they're that much.
I can't eat. Not unless I want to buy. No, no, we stay waiting there. All right, if we have no discussion, we will go ahead and call for a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? All right, motion carries. We'll move on to unfinished business, which we have none. We had no other business, and then you have.
Yep, so it is January sixth, and it's six forty-nine. And the council will now meet in executive session to discuss employment as allowed by RCW forty-two dash thirty dash one ten dash one dash H. The council will be in executive session until it's called seven oh five. And we're not just, we're not expected to take further action in this executive session, and if we're going to be any later, we will come back and let you guys know, and then. Uh, in this executive session, and if we're gonna be any later, we will come back and let you guys know, and then. Okay, okay.
Will you give me my card and give me a call, please?
Absolutely.
Sorry for making you all wait, making you all wait.
Yes.
You know, they used to, they used to kick everybody outside.
I hadn't got prepared to walk out.
No. Well, you're, you're, you're welcome, cuz I said, what on earth is this? No, we did it in the winter too, like it was raining and freezing and we kicked everybody outside, I'm like. Why don't we step out?
Exactly. All right, perfect.
Thanks, ma'am.
From executive session. We'll go ahead and go in, so we have the three-minute public input section. Oh, yes, thank you. You can probably come back a little.
Public works, public work should have done that. If it needs to get moved, you can adjust it.
All right, so we will open for, um, public inputs. I did have a question for you, however, um, as, as far as the cemetery goes, I know when you were here before talking about the. The column there. Um, where, or have they moved forward with any of that? Yes, yes, please, sorry.
Yes, uh, we, uh, been.
Yeah, sorry, your name.
Jake Morgan.
That's my fault.
Uh, we have been working on it for the last year to make sure we, uh, uh, cross all our Ts and everything, and, uh. We are still trying to get a contractor to do it, we have a spot that's, uh, right next to the exit road, that's right by the edge of the hill. And, uh, it's, uh, um, it has cemetery plots, but no, no bodies under there, so we're, we're just using our own space. So.
Okay.
We're not gonna need water for it, we're just gonna need to, uh, put a concrete pad and then put the boxes on top of it.
Okay. Thank you, yeah, I was, I was driving by the other day and I was looking at, I was like, I really need to get an update from him on where. Oh, sorry.
This is a follow-up on the cemetery, uh, Toledo Cemetery. We're going to, we're planning to put in, uh, uh, funeral niche boxes for one, it's called a column area. Okay, it's gonna have ninety-six boxes, uh, with covers and stuff on them, that you could, uh, buy a box and put it on. Instead, instead of getting a plot.
The cemetery, yeah. Yeah.
That way you don't lose your loved ones.
And it'd be another option for people, but we're still doing the plots too.
Thank you.
Is that it?
Yeah, that, yeah.
Public comment too.
Oh, yes, go ahead.
Jake Morgan, uh, so this is about commercial water bills. Um, the art gallery, uh, which has been in the building at two or five kals for thirteen years. Uh, they got, uh, they got moved out, uh, there's a new owner to the building, you've seen, they're doing a lot of work remodeling and everything. So we're trying to find a new location and we wanna stay in town, and we're coming up with this problem with the water bills. And the problem is that if you want to rent a space. In an existing building, that it requires you to have an additional water bill.
That's not, that's not the case, it, part of Bushland's conditional use permit is that he has a residential hookup and a commercial hookup. So that doesn't apply for all of Toledo, it's, that was just part of his condition. Because it's, it's the, it's zoned commercially, and he wants to have a residence there, and so that's why they've got the two. And that was just part of.
I was at that meeting.
Yeah.
We, uh, we have been looking at the other buildings too, including the, uh, the Wilson Building and, uh, Joe Notch's Building and, uh. Other places like, uh, uh, Rachel Phillips Building too. And, uh, and it's kind of the same, the same thing where there's a business in there, where the business owner has a water bill, and then if they want to. Uh, sublease this to, uh, to a building, then each of those businesses has to have another water bill. And I, I think you guys need to, to revise, revise that and take a look at that and see if that is. Really in our best interest for trying to promote more businesses to come into town, the core business area.
So Ra- Rachel, maybe you can talk to RMSA on this, I was. Green new on council when this came up before, and so I didn't know what I didn't, I didn't know anything at that point, but I do recall. It was a problem. Um, but that was back in the days of Michelle and Dobash, so.
Okay, and if you do want, I can get you, uh, so that is part of Bushland's condition that was passed through planning commission.
Yeah.
But we can get you on council and, and council will be able, be able to override that condition. Um, so if you'd like, we can get you on the next council.
But I think we should look at the rule.
Look at the rules, because of that, I wanted to apply to like Wilson's Building, the Rock Ridge. He was just saying that he has four hookups for one water pipe. And so if he's trying to rent those out, then each of those little businesses that wants a little room, they'd have to pay a city water bill.
There's four units, but we were over there today and it's literally like one bathroom and then a half bathroom, so.
It hasn't had, it hasn't had four water payments.
No, it hasn't, it hasn't.
Center next to the thing, he only has like one bathroom in there, but he has those different offices. And so if you have like a really small business that just has like one person that needs a desk. That to say that they have to pay a, a city water bill, that's adding on to their monthly thing and making it kind of, so. If you guys take, take another look at that and see if that's fair.
Can you be here in, in the next council meeting?
Sure.
And we'll get you on to see, council will look at that condition of Bushland's. Yeah.
It's not just Bushland's building, yeah, we are looking at that, uh, too, and when we tried to move in there as the gallery, they said that he would. Uh, charge, that we would have to pay another water bill for the art gallery.
I think we should.
To the bookstore.
Yeah, there were several conditions on there, he's been in a couple times, cuz I know he is trying to get Mike, and I've talked to, I've talked to Mike too. Um, and in that, um, I know before I talked to Dan this morning, he said that, um, I know. Mike was asking about the parking, um, and it seems that there's that easement that's back there that they were able to use for parking. And it's kind of confusing, cuz one of the conditions on Bushland's permit was that he, um. He couldn't bring in excess traffic, but that's the whole point of. Of, of businesses, right? So, um, he's supposed to come back and see me later this week, I told him not to worry about it, but that easement. And I haven't really done our research on it, people should be able to park on that easement, I think I just need an, I, I just. He needs to have general liability, um, and that needs to cover that, that easement area, so we'd have to have that on, um, property. And you need to let Mike know too, his conditional use permit has not been approved yet, he's gotta meet the conditions first, and then he needs to come in and see me. Right, he needs, well, he needs, and I understand what he's trying to do, so he can get moved in sooner, but before Mike can open and he can move in. There still needs to be some things that need to happen with me, like I do need to see the general liability, so you can let Mike know that's fine. I believe that there was a contract in place with Bonanza Barbecue, um, and the city that just basically stated. Their general liability was gonna cover that easement for their patrons and the parking and all that stuff, so. Um, if Mike wants to put it on his general liability, that's fine, I can type something up, but Bushland does need to come in and there's. There's, he still needs that actual permit.
I believe the funding commission was more concerned that he might personally have a whole bunch of cars, and he said he doesn't.
Okay, so that, that clears up that, so yeah, we can figure out, let Mike know that we can, if he wants to just shoot me an email or whatever, when he wants to come in. Um, and we can put a contract and you guys can figure out who's insurance or whatever, thank you. Yeah.
Can I get a clarification? Do each of those office, offices have running water?
No.
Okay.
Those are like one shared bathroom.
I think it needs to make sense.
Yeah, that, that.
That, that would make any sense, yeah.
Exactly.
It's a burden on these small businesses trying to move in, like people, they're just, they're working out of their home and they wanna have a, a, a retail spot. Or something right in town or an office or even, as we wanna encourage that.
Yeah, it's not like they.
And also maybe understand that those, that, that there predates all of us.
It does, yeah, and so I will look at Joe's, I will look at Joe's bill. If you wanna let them know if they can come speak on that too, but I will have something back from RMSA and, and I think council will definitely look at that condition. Cuz I do understand, there's not a lot of, um, the, the profit and loss for the art studio, isn't all crazy, so.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jake.
He's like, and running away.
Hi, Wheeler, non-relevant, um, first. Thank you for working. Like, I'm so happy seeing the police car done and just being done.
Looks good too.
Second thing, do we have a plan for street cleanups after events? We went to El Tano before city council this morning, today, and as we were coming out, we noticed that New Year's is kind of still just. All over the parking lot and sidewalk and it was one of those. It's nice to see that there was a great community celebration, but it's been a week and maybe there shouldn't be.
Correct.
So I know that like larger cities, they have a street sweeper, that's just if you're having an event, sweet street sweeper comes afterward. So I think that that's something to be mindful of, um. Matt and I are considering renting a commercial building downtown, and we know about the separate segregated water meters, um, typically most. Large municipalities, at, at a certain point, when a commercial building is divided, they get separately segregated meters so that people can pay their own bills. Um, a lot of landlords tend to get frustrated when we have one meter and three tenants, and we have to figure out who has twenty percent of the water bill and who has ten percent of the water bill. I don't see a problem with separately segregated meters, um, the biggest obstacle there for small businesses tends to be the daily use fee. I don't know how you're structured here, but a lot of places, it's like seventy-five bucks a month, just to keep your meter running, whether you have water coming through it or not. And so that might be a way to help. Businesses that have four meters where it's like you only pay one meter rate for the month. But you still are able to separate it out for your different tenants. Other than that, don't ask me what the points are for more. We'll tell you eventually.
Thanks, Kyle, thank you.
I got that paper with, uh, four different sizes of curb stops.
Yes. We know, but.
I got the paper with, uh, you know, four choices in curb stops. Curb stops control volume, not gallons per minute or gallons in this case. Every curb stop is metered the exact same way, even though the meter may be a different size, it's gallons, it's not about volume, it's about gallons. Um, so regardless of what size curb stop you have, the gallons around the meter, the gallons on the meter. And that's, I was, I was looking at them going, you know, it struck me as odd because it makes no sense. So anyway, on to the meter themselves. As you know, I have one meter, I'm going for electric meter, but I have four addresses for whatever reason, the three streets don't even exist anymore as I found out today. Um. The, the single meter thing is. Needs to be between the landlord and the tenant, because it's impossible, when, when you put in four meters, you gotta repipe a whole building, that's just not, it's not happening, it's just not feasible. And I'm sure you all understand that. When the single meter. You send a single bill for the meter, and then the landlord, unfortunately, the only way to do it is for the landlord to do the divvying up of that meter. And. To try and say, we're gonna, we're gonna get a service fee for four meters when there's one, only one meter there. Is all well and good, and there are rules here and rules there, and you know, like Buzz or Rourke, he's represents me, he's there, they're my attorney of record for everything. And occasionally they ask me questions, because they, they, they are good attorneys, but they don't know anything about the Public Utilities Commission. And. When the Public Utilities Commission receives a complaint, they look into it. And if they start sniffing around and look at things they don't like, then they dig deeper. And. You don't want that, I don't want that, I, me and Rachel have solved my problem today, we've solved it, but food for thought is just friendly advice. I would build, I would build single meters, no matter how many people in there is a single meter, and let the landlord hash that out. Before somebody drops a dime where you don't want it dropped.
And I'll look into this.
That's all I got to say.
Okay, thank you so much.
I would just ask you some questions before you, you know, one, how you felt about that, nothing more, nothing less, all right?
Thank you, sir.
Any more public comment tonight? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion we adjourn.
Second.
All right, then moved by Eric, seconded by Jamie, all those in favor?
We need, we have a meeting on Wednesday, we. Meeting that we need to.
Make three.
Yes.
Um, Wednesday, the eight, eight at four o'clock.
Hey, meeting adjourned at seven nineteen.